I'm going to call us back to order the December 9 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Hill. There is no closed session report this evening.
All right, then we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Gardner. And following that, please remain standing. The invocation will be by Pastor Pete McKenzie.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we gather here this evening to pause and thank you for the city of Newport Beach, for the work that you're doing here through these servants that serve the public so faithfully. And Father, we want to thank you for having a nation and a country where we can elect our own. And Lord, where they serve as public servants. And so, Lord, we acknowledge that tonight as we come, as those who will be leaving the council, those who are continuing on the council, and Father, those who will be sworn in tonight. We just want to ask your blessing on all of this, in Jesus' name. Amen. We have a evening of presentations, and we're going to play this a little bit off the cuff. But I think that is Supervisor... I'm going to call us back to order the December 9 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Hill. There is no closed session report this evening.
All right, then we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Gardner. And following that, please remain standing. The invocation will be by Pastor Pete McKenzie.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we gather here this evening to pause and thank you for the city of Newport Beach, for the work that you're doing here through these servants that serve the public so faithfully. And Father, we want to thank you for having a nation and a country where we can elect our own. And Lord, where they serve as public servants. And so, Lord, we acknowledge that tonight as we come, as those who will be leaving the council, those who are continuing on the council, and Father, those who will be sworn in tonight. We just want to ask your blessing on all of this, in Jesus' name. Amen. We have a evening of presentations, and we're going to play this a little bit off the cuff. But I think that is Supervisor Morlock here? Do I see him here yet? All right. Then is Assemblyman Matt Harper here yet? All right. We might get through this faster than planned. Is Kevin Gilhooli here yet? Ah ha. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Kevin Gilhooli. I represent the Southern California Association of Governments. We are a regional transportation, housing, and land use planning agency. For the past several years, Councilwoman Leslie Daigle has been a member of our Governing Board of Directors known as the Regional Council. As an expression of our appreciation for your vision and leadership at the Southern California Association of Governments, I would like to present this resolution to you, Councilwoman Daigle. And on behalf of SCAG President Carl Morehouse from the city of Antura and SCAG CEO Hassan Akkara, we'd like to thank you very much for your service at SCAG and wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Kevin, we'll probably do photos in front of the flag there, so stay right where you are. Thank you. I believe next we have Michael Crayman, the CEO of the Toll Road Authority here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, council members. Rush, it's really a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize your service in representing the city of Newport Beach on the San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agencies. Rush has been a great leader on the board, having served since 2011, including two terms as our chairman. You're leaving us in really good shape, Rush. When I look at the San Joaquin Hills Corridor and our recent refinancing of the debt, it really puts us in a great, long-term, stable financial position. And under your leadership, you made that possible, and we're very grateful for that. We've always at TCA appreciated your straightforwardness and your long-term vision, and obviously, the leadership that you brought to us. So on behalf of the executive team and the staff at the Toll Roads, we want to sincerely thank you for being part of the TCA family, and we have a resolution we'd like to share with you.
Thank you very much. Next, I believe, we'll ask Councilman Keith Curry to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. I have the honor, on behalf of Assemblyman Alan Mansour, to present to my colleagues some certificates. I did train for this job, although it appears to be about as close as I'm going to get to presenting assembly certificates. First of all, to my colleague Leslie Daigle. And I'll just sort of read many of the where-ozes here. Leslie has completed her term on the Newport Beach City Council, following eight years of dedicated and responsible service, and it is appropriate at this time to highlight her many achievements and extend special recognitions and commendations for her many fine public accomplishments. And for the past 16 years, she's served as government relations representative in private industry. And her experience in that field has helped prepare her for her tenure on the Newport Beach City Council. And over the course of her two terms as a council member, Leslie Daigle is focused ardently on areas including sound fiscal policy, support for cities entrepreneurs, effective service delivering, and protection of the city's coastal and bay waters. And whereas through her committed service on the council's finance committee, Leslie Daigle advocated budgetary actions that balanced the competing demands of residents, employees, and taxpayers, and led skillfully to produce a balanced budget and earn a rare and coveted AAA bond rating from the three major national agencies. And whereas deeply committed to improving the safety and well-being for all of her community, Leslie Daigle has advocated for local infrastructure improvements, reduced urban runoff, improved water quality for Newport's bay and beaches, and served as the council's liaison to local schools to improve coordinated municipal services. And whereas in recognition of her many professional and civic contributions, she was named one of the 103 most influential people in the Newport Mesa area by The Daily Pilot in 2010, resolved by Assemblymember Alan Mansour that the Honorable Leslie Daigle to be commended on her long and distinguished record of leadership as a member of the Newport Beach City Council. Leslie, on behalf of Alan, I am very proud to present this to you. And let me add a personal word of Leslie's strong commitment to water quality in the upper bay. She has been a tireless advocate throughout her entire time on the city council, and all of us owe her a debt of gratitude for her achievements in that area and for her many accomplishments to make this a cleaner and better place for water and to live. Now, to the Honorable Mike Hin. Whereas the Honorable Mike Hin is completing his term on the Newport Beach City Council, following eight years of dedicated service. And whereas his family in 1986 moved from Chicago, Illinois, to California, and since 1994, he has resided in Newport Beach. And whereas, following his initial election in Newport Beach City Council in 2006, Michael Hin was re-elected in 2010 and served as mayor in 2011. And throughout his service, he's earned a reputation as an individual deeply committed to a variety of programs based on meeting the challenging needs of the community. And whereas, as an active business consultant, Michael Hin serves on the Board of Directors at the St. John's Northwestern Military Academy in Wisconsin and at two private charitable foundations. Whereas in his spare time, Mike Hin enjoys spending time with his wife of 24 years, Lynn, his three daughters, all of whom reside in or near Newport Beach and their families. And whereas intelligent, articulate, aware, and involved, Michael Hin is an excellent example of a public-spirited citizen willing to assume the responsibilities of leadership. And whereas the contribution that Michael Hin has made to the people of Newport Beach have been invaluable, and he has made a lasting impression on those individuals to whom he has been associated, now therefore, resolved by Assemblymember Alan Mansour that the Honorable Mike Hin is to be commended on his long and distinguished career of leadership as a member of the Newport Beach City Council. Thank you. And let me just add my own personal comments here, because this is the time when we need to remember just exactly what has been accomplished in eight years. Mike Hin, more than anybody else, has led the effort to revitalize the peninsula, to bring that area back both economically and to bring it back to a neighborhood that people want to live in. He was the founder of the family-friendly Fourth of July effort, which has changed the way the Fourth of July is celebrated in our city and changed the profile of the people who come to celebrate here. He was instrumental in our group home ordinance, which was controversial at the time, but which has resulted in a 40% reduction in the number of concentrated group homes in our city. And it's been its implementation a success, so much so that two weeks ago, we had neighborhood groups commending the operator who was fulfilling the terms of their development agreement by becoming a good member of the neighborhood and of the community, while at the same time participating in making it a better place to live. The work going on now at Lido Marina Village is the result of Mike's vision. His vision in Balboa Village is currently now being implemented. What many people don't see is his leadership in personnel administration and his work behind the scenes as a former CFO to make this a strong and financially viable community. Our AAA bond rating by all three bond rating agencies is as much a reflection of his work as it is anybody's up here, and Mike deserves a tremendous amount of credit for that. Under his leadership, the Finance Committee, beginning with our actions two years ago, and most recently at the last meeting, have reduced our pension liability by more than $200 million. This is one of the strongest financially solvent cities in America. It has some of the strongest reserves in America. We just finished with a $10.3 million budget surplus. That's the result of the leadership and the contributions of the entire council, but particularly, Mike, of your leadership as chairman of the Finance Committee. Next, on behalf of Assemblymember Mansour, I am pleased to recognize my friend and colleague, the Honorable Nancy Gardner, also completing eight years on the city council. Whereas born and raised in Newport Beach, Nancy Gardner grew up in Corona del Mar, and after graduating from Newport Harbor High School, earned a bachelor's of arts degrees from the University of Southern California and her MA from the University of California, Irvine. And whereas an active member of the Newport Beach community, Nancy Gardner has been involved with city issues for years, with a particular concern for the environment. And that has led her to focus on water quality issues and the Coastal Bay Water Quality Citizens Advisory Committee and the Newport Beach chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. And whereas as co-chair of the city's general plan advisory committee, Nancy Gardner provided her wise counsel to help shape the general plan passed in 2006. And she also served as a board member of the Balboa Performing Arts Theater Foundation, working to restore the historic Balboa Theater to as an arts resource for the entire community. And whereas professionally, Nancy Gardner served as the Marketing Director for Century 21 Real Estate, and she coordinated the marketing needs of 9,000 real estate offices. She also served as Senior Vice President for Butterfield Savings, where she was selected by federal regulators to help rehabilitate the field financial institution. And through her years on the city council, Nancy Gardner's worked diligently to address the concerns and needs of residents in the area of improving the quality of life for future generations. Resolved by Assemblymember Alan Mansour that the Honorable Nancy Gardner be commended for her long and distinguished record of leadership as a member of the Newport Beach City Council. Nancy, I wanted to just add a couple of personal words. Assemblymember Mansour's resolution talks about your involvement in 2006 and your leadership in the general plan. The general plan that we adopted, that the voters adopted in 2006, more than anything else, sit the blueprint for keeping this city financially strong through the recession. Your leadership there and bringing together all areas of the community was a great testament to you and to your status and to the regard that people hold you in this community. Frankly, looking back at it, we should have had more of your leadership on measure Y in this past election. Some people may not remember that in the depths of the recession, one of the things that was on the chopping block was the Corona del Mar Library. Some people thought it was too close to the central library. It was redundant. We really didn't need it. But your leadership protected that library and kept it as a viable community resource, where it is beloved today in the community. Frankly, I worry in the future going forward without your leadership to protect it. But you should always think of that as a major accomplishment. It has been an honor and a pleasure to work with you, because without your leadership, neither the Oasis Senior Center nor the Newport Coast Community Center would have come to fruition. So I congratulate you for your tremendous leadership on behalf of our city. And Mayor Protem Selich will present your certificate from Assemblymember Mansour. But I just want to add my personal thoughts and comments to you as you conclude your term here with the city. You have been a tremendous leader for all of the community. You have made tremendous accomplishments. A lot of people like to talk about cutting taxes and cutting fees. But your Newport dividend initiative actually cut fees by more than $1.5 million. And that was done in a way that spurred more than $60 million of residential improvements by homeowners throughout our city, increasing property values for everyone, broadening our tax base, and making this a better community for future generations. You articulated a vision for new golf facilities in the Newport Coast area and for a revitalized community throughout the entire city. Through your leadership, we have a civic center that is in envy of people from throughout the world who come here to marvel at it. And you took a little bit of heat for that in this election, so did I. But I recall about 125 years ago, there was a fellow by the name of Charles Garnier. Mr. Garnier represented an organization called the Committee of 300. This was sort of the reform residence group of his time, who was brought together, and they put together a petition. The petition said, "We protest with all our strength and all our indignation in the name of slighted French taste against the erection of the useless and monstrous Eiffel Tower. For 20 years, we shall see streaming out like a blot of ink this hateful shadow of the hateful column of bolted sheet metal." Now, I picked the Eiffel Tower, but I could easily have picked the Brooklyn Bridge, the Disney Concert Hall, the Panama Canal, St. Paul's Cathedral, the Empire State Building, or the Washington Monument. Because the fact is, nearly all structures that we think of today as iconic had at the time their critics and those who were shortsighted. Rush, in the next decade, because of your leadership, 12 million people will visit the new central library. 70,000 people will gather for concerts and programs on our civic green, what might have been an asphalt parking lot. One and a half million people will park in the parking structure instead of an asphalt lot visible from MacArthur Boulevard. Hundreds of thousands of people will walk in the park and take their dog to the dog park. And the older of the children today who are enjoying the bunnies will by that time be bringing their own children to enjoy the bunnies. And today, 125, removed as we are by 125 years of history, by more than 5,000 miles, and by an entirely different language, everybody in this room tonight knows who Gustave Eiffel was. But until I mentioned his name, not a single person had ever heard of Charles Garnier. And by the time they get home tonight, nobody will remember him again. That's the way it is with the critics, and that's the way it's always been, such as the legacy you leave for future generations here in Newport Beach.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Mr. Mayor, I know Mr. Morlock's here. I was just about to do that. Thank you. Supervisor Morlock, good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, good to be seen. I just don't have anything super fancy, but just some certificates for the four of you. It has been a real honor to serve these last eight years with you. I've always called Michael "Dr. Hin." I'll probably do that for the rest of my life. I don't know where it started or why, Mike, but thanks for humoring me.
You'll thank me after I do brain surgery on you.
Leslie, it's been just a real joy to work with you on a lot of projects. For most recent, the vector control, and thank you for being a faithful participant with that. Nancy, my favorite quote from you was, we had the room full of advocates, and the Sierra Club was in the room, and they were upset that I wanted to give Upper Newport Bay to the city of Newport Beach. And I turned to you and I said, "Nancy, would you like to start this discussion?" And you said, "How soon can we have it?" I'll never forget how that changed the whole complexion of the discussion. That's on the Newport Watershed Executive Committee, and thank you. It's been a joy to work with you. Rush, I don't golf, but we tried real hard.
We're not done.
We're not done, but we tried to get something over there at Coyote Hills. And we'll see what our successors do, but it's been a real honor to work with you as well. So thank you for letting me sneak in to just give my appreciation. As we're realizing, all good things come to an end, and it is just providence that we were able to work together, and I'm grateful for that. And I just want to thank you, because you represent one of the most incredible cities on the planet. And there will be times where I'd pinch myself, saying, "I'm really the supervisor with a district that includes Newport Beach?" I mean, gold standard. And so, take good care of her, and thank you for investing in her and giving her your stewardship. This place is a better place because of the four of you, and it's an honor to at least give you a little token of my appreciation.
Let's have the four of us come down and join you at the flag.
That'd be an honor.
Before you walk that far over there, I would like to thank you for assisting and your leadership in probably one of the most important things that we've ever dealt with as a community, and that's the extension of the John Wayne Settlement Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how I let that slip, because it seemed like the day I was elected, Newport Beach was at my office. Okay, let's start working on this. And I am extremely pleased with the results and your leadership, and Councilmember Keith Curry. Curry and the rest, Leslie, just outstanding.
Well, it was a great effort. It was a great effort of your office, under your direction, our staff, our airfare group, our airport working group, and my council colleagues that were involved. And we truly had that as the number one priority across the board, and that's how we saw it through in the timeline that I think we did. So I appreciate that very much. Let's go down and we'll have a picture. Supervisor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
I have a resolution here from the Assemblyman Alan Mansour, and there's so much in here I don't think I can read it all as well as Councilman Curry did, but the other ones. But it cites you as a leader of the community and that you've given a quality civic involvement and public spirit, and you're completing your tenure as mayor in the year 2014. You were first elected to the city council in 2010 as the District Three representative, and you've brought credit and distinction to yourself as a wise and skillful civic leader, known for working hands-on with boards of directors and easily understanding analyses and discussions to fully take advantage of complex opportunities. It cites your academic achievements as Bachelor of Architecture from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo and your experience with the Reagan administration. And it also says that a result of your tireless hard work and unwavering commitment, you have compiled an impressive record of personal, professional, and civic achievements, a record that has earned you the admiration and respect of those persons who have had the privilege of associating themselves with you. And now, therefore, Assembly resolves that the Honorable Rush Hill will be commended on his exemplary record of leadership as mayor of Newport Beach and extends sincere best wishes for continued success in your future endeavors. Signed by Alan Mansour, 74th Assembly District.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Petros.
It is my honor to represent our United States Congressman Dana Rohrbacher with certificates of recognition to my four colleagues. I will say that these certificates do not include all of the wherethes and therefores, so this will go much briefer. I will also say that I will be as brief as these certificates are and just hand them out to my four colleagues. But before I do, I would just like to say that as the new kid on this council, it has been a wonderful experience, a learning experience, to be with you all, whether it be issues related to the John Wayne Settlement, to the Upper Bay Newport, to the fiscal management of this city, and to general water quality and environmental issues. I have learned a great deal. I am a better man for being up here with the four of you. So on behalf of myself, I'd say thank you, and on behalf of the congressman, he says thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. On behalf of the city staff, I get to say a heartfelt thank you, too. Certainly, I'll say that to the four people who are leaving us today, but I also want to say that to the residents of Newport Beach. Most of us don't live here, but we get to work for some of your finest citizens. He sent four to office eight and four years ago, and they were our respected and admired bosses for these last years. They advise us, they inform us, they correct us, and they remind us of the values important to the community. I can attest that they worked very hard for you. They demand a lot of us as well, but all in good service to you. We are so thankful for them. We look forward to working with your new representatives just as much, and we wish our departing bosses a wonderful and fulfilling return to private life.
Thank you, Dave. I think, let's see, some of them at Harper? All right. Is there anyone else that has come for presentation? If not, then I would move at this point in time to have Councilman Hin. Would you like to offer your parting remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a bittersweet time for me, and I'll try not to get too verklempt over it. Some of you know what that means. We've had a lot to say here tonight about accomplishments, and I won't repeat those things, although I'll have to say I'm extremely proud of what we've accomplished over the last eight years here in this council class. And by council class, I mean the people that are sitting up here now and the two other council members that I began to serve with as I started in 2006. And I also mean we to include the outstanding staff that serves the citizens of Newport Beach and that supports us in all that we do as well as and involve public. It takes all three of those constituencies to achieve a success in public governance. It also takes a considerable amount of hard work. I estimate that around 30 hours a week on average, times 50 or so weeks a year, times eight years, and you get 12,000 hours of service to the city. I don't think I'm unique amongst anyone up here, having spent that amount of time and effort in behalf of the city and its citizens. And I'm proud that this council class has had major generational impact on our city for the better. And in support of that, consider just a few things. I had a longer list, some of them have already been mentioned, and I don't want to take too much time tonight, but think about the generational impact of just these few selected things. Three major new parks, 34 acres in the city, in a city that's basically built out, has been for a long time. The new civic center complex that's already been so well-described. 17,000 square feet of addition to our library and the refurbishment of two of our branch libraries. The completion of a $50 million Upper Bay project to completely restore that area. The completion of the dredging of Newport Harbor for the first time in 80 years at a cost of $10 million. The cleanup of the Rhine Channel, our city's only significant toxic materials location. In summation, this council over the past eight years has tackled every tough issue in the city that needed to be tackled. We never kicked the can down the road on a single problem to leave a mess for somebody else. We have honored the long tradition in Newport Beach of all of the councils that have preceded us, that we have left the city in a better state than we inherited. As important to that as that is how we accomplished it, I've had the great good fortune on this council to serve with seven different, or six other different people, each of which have had a different skill set and expertise. That's allowed us to confidently lean on each other to divide and conquer the issues, with individual council members taking the point on issues specific to their strengths. I'm also proud that we did absolutely no log-rolling, no behind-the-scenes deal-making amongst ourselves outside the public view. We had a common view that our main purpose was to maximize our investment in public value, not just to maintain the status quo of an already great city, but to further improve it with more and better parks, public facilities, programs, and infrastructure in a fiscally sound and sustainable way. We assessed each issue straight up, guided by the facts. We voted and then we moved on, with absolutely no feelings of recrimination at having lost a vote or some sort of a desire to get even on the next vote. We knew our purpose was to solve problems, not prosecute ideological points of view or political leanings. And perhaps as important as any of the above, as I mentioned, we were supported by an outstanding staff led by our city manager, Dave Kiff. I do have a few words of advice to our incoming council members. I will understand if you choose to value my advice for what it costs you. My words of advice are born of my personal experience up here, and my hope is that they will be helpful to you. My most sincere hope is that they will. So here goes. First, be prepared to work a lot harder at this job than you thought you would when you ran, no matter how hard you thought you were going to work. It's more. It's relatively easy to sit up here and cast votes. However, if your purpose is to make change, you will find that it's much harder and takes more skill than you think. Consider that you need to, first, convince at least three other council members. Second, have strong and constructive staff support. Third, public involvement and support. And you have to do all of the above by adhering to strict Brown Act and political reform conflict of interest laws. And those laws and regulations are getting tougher all the time. It ain't easy. My last point of advice is to beware of concluding that you have a mandate or that the voices that are the loudest or that show up at council meetings actually represent the wishes of the majority of all of our residents. You should consider their input, but in the end, decide what's best in the long run for the great silent majority out there that doesn't sound off on the issues. In short, whether you take any of my gratuitous advice, I trust that, and I'm confident, that you too will leave the city in a better state than that which you inherited. I'd like to close with just a few words of thanks. First and foremost, to my wife Lynn and my family, who have so thoroughly supported me, so graciously acceded to my absence as I've pursued my 12,000 hours of service. Second, to my fellow council members, past and present, with whom I have soldiered for the past eight years. To a person, I would gladly share a foxhole with each of you again, anytime. You are the best I can imagine serving with. Third, to staff, who have steadfastly and tirelessly supported the plans and strategies and policies of this council in an outstanding fashion. And last, to the residents of Newport Beach who entrusted me to care for their city and their quality of life with their votes in 2006 and 2010. I hope you feel I have honored your trust with my service, and I am humbled and I am thankful for the opportunity that you gave me to do that.
Well done, Councilman Hin. Councilwoman Diggle.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Well, I've been here for a decade, so perhaps I get 20 minutes for each year.
Perhaps not.
In politics, they say, dance with the ones who brung ya. I served in the planning commission, I was appointed to the council, elected, and then re-elected. And when I was appointed to the city council 10 years ago, it was by a developer, an attorney, an engineer, and an attorney who later became a Supreme Court, a Superior Court judge. So I want to thank Todd Ridgway, John Heffernan, Don Webb, and Steve Bromberg. And I see in our audience that we have Centennial Mayor, Don Webb, who we served with. So thank you for your service, Don. As far as representation goes, you get what you vote for, and you get what you allow to happen. Effective representation is about vigilance, and in this council, we've had a very long list of projects completed in the past decade, and I'm just going to highlight three. One is the Oasis Senior Center. The council delivered on a senior center that's a place designed to enrich our residents' quality of life. It serves as a wonderful example of Newport's respect for and appreciation of our senior residents. You can tell a great deal about a city's character and heart by the way it treats its senior residents. Secondly, we are one of only five cities in California to earn our rare and coveted AAA credit rating. The city is on solid financial footing. Thirdly, something I became very involved with. As an ordinary citizen, I looked around and I wondered why the Upper Newport Bay project was languishing, and the Lower Bay had not been dredged for 80 years. I served as the council's lead advocate to secure bipartisan federal support and funding for completion of the Upper Bay Restoration Project. This project continues to serve as an example of what sustainability looks like through a combination of enhanced water quality, wetland restoration, and environmental enhancement. Migratory birds enjoy the enhanced features, as do humans who appreciate the economic, environmental, and recreational value that this bay adds to our entire region. I was then instrumental in initiating a dredging project of the main Newport Harbor navigation channels. I didn't embrace the status quo of, well, we've never been able to do that, so just forget it. The difficulty wasn't in removing the sediment, it's developing a sustainable plan for disposal when there's contamination. I worked to develop a federal-local partnership, identify funding, and establish a partnership with the Port of Long Beach for the disposal of the sediment. Water surrounds us, it's the DNA of our community. It establishes and defines the entire character of Newport Beach: ocean, ocean views, ocean breeze, bayfront, Upper Bay. And there is no other municipality I know of that does more to facilitate visitors at our own expense who want to enjoy the ocean: paramedics, lifeguards, refuse workers, custodians, street sweepers. Newport Beach is the host of the coast. It's fair to say this council has worked collaboratively, and I have worked with people of considerable gifts. It has been a joy to learn from each of them and to do the city's business here. And I think it's fair to say that we have resolved issues that eluded our community for generations, came up with a plan for Marina Park, that was a 50-year discussion. We built the Sunset Ridge that had been in the planning stages for 40 years, dredged a harbor that had not been done so for 80 years. We installed a modern signal synchronization system. Getting elected is not like an inoculation, you sort of get elected and then you're all set. In order for government to be properly guided, citizens have to be informed and support their elected officials. And for things to happen, you must be vigilant. So new members, you are now the tip of the spear. And there's a long list of things to get done. Banning Ranch, are you going to clean up Banning Ranch? What are your plans to rehabilitate that property? Bellbo Island, we've seen significant property tax increases over the Bellbo Island, we've seen significant property tax increases over the years. Why can't those increases be used to pay for undergrounding instead of sticking people with a special district? Why can't the city pay for those aging seawalls? How are you going to handle those issues? Become informed about the city's revenues and where the expenditures are. Now that we have a modern signal synchronization system, which took vigilance, are you going to drive its optimization and ensure resources are in place to add the next generations of technology? Last week, we kicked off the planning for the Lower Big Canyon. And once Irvine Ranch Conservancy completes that planning, it can be efficiently restored in one year. Be relentless, don't let things slip from five-year plan to five-year plan. Elected officials need people they can count on. The legislative body is not the ultimate implementer. And I want to thank five special people or entities that I appreciate and have supported the council and make Newport Beach the renowned community that it is. First is Senator Marion Bergerson, an example, a mentor, a skilled policymaker. She always conducts herself as a lady. Secondly, I want to thank our police chief, Jay Johnson. Public safety is a core community service that is essential to the safety and welfare of our community. I thank the police chief for building a strong, diverse, and highly skilled police force, and for the formation of special detail units. Their job is to protect our lives and our property, and the council consistently provides the funding being requested for personnel training and technology. We've maintained our traditional high levels of public safety and response times while achieving pension reform that is unmatched in the county. I'd also like to thank the Irvine Company. Its genius and leadership has made this a far better, healthier, and more beautiful city. I'd like to thank Dave Kiff, our city manager. He is the consummate professional. Thank you, Dave, for implementing the programs of the council in a manner that is energetic and fully supportive. And fifth, I'd like to thank the Public Works Department. Engineers are an unheralded group of professionals. They implement a wide variety of transportation services and capital improvements. And in our city, they're on the forefront of water quality and bike safety planning and project implementation. During my decade on city council, a long list of projects to the tune of almost $100 million was completed in my council district. So thank you, Public Works, and for the generations that have served in our Public Works Department. Public Works builds parks. On Saturday, we celebrated the opening of our 65th park. Residents can play ball, ride a bike, or simply sit and watch the sunset over the Pacific Ocean. And now, thanks to Councilman Henn, we even have installed a tsunami warning system. So we have early alert, given all the water we have around us. Out of respect for our residents, we did a community survey and found that 99% of the people that live in Newport Beach like living in Newport Beach. It's one of the nation's most admired, beautiful, and best-run communities. And I thank the staff for their role in keeping our city going every day and all of the operations involved. In closing, during my time on city council, I've been working concurrently in the private sector. It's been a hectic 10 years and a period of profound accomplishment. I may run for public office again someday. And while I miss the excitement of doing good things for my community, I have the opportunity to focus my energies on my private sector career. I leave office at this time with gratitude and appreciation for the privilege to serve the people of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diggle. Councilwoman Gardner.
When you read interviews with retired athletes, they say, yeah, yeah, I miss the game, but what I really miss are the people. And I think that's the way I'll feel. There'll be parts of the game I'll miss, but what I will really miss are those residents who give so generously of their time to the city, to the staff, that time and again goes above and beyond the call of duty. And most of all, to my colleagues, this has been really a wonderful experience, eight years, seven different people, and able to function as one so many times. I've really appreciated that. And now it's on to my next excellent adventure, whatever that may be.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gardner. Councilwoman Mayor Protim Selig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Hill, it's my honor, on behalf of the entire city council, of the city of Newport Beach, to present you with a plaque in honor of your service this year as mayor of the city. But before I actually give it to you, I'd just like to make a few comments, because I don't think a lot of people realize the many, many years you have served the city. Although you've only been on the city council for four years, your record of community service goes back decades. I know that I first met you in 1995, when I was appointed to the Economic Development Committee. The city was coming out of a recession in those days, and in difficult financial situation. And Mayor Hill, along with others, formed the Economic Development Committee to assist the city in solving a lot of the financial difficulties that were occurring at the time. And I got to know you quite well during that time, and in fact, we became good friends, and have remained friends for all those years. After your service on the Economic Development Committee, you went on and served this community in many capacities: chamber of Congress, through the high schools, and other organizations in the community, and have always given a lot of your time, energy, and efforts to serve in the residents of our city. And for the past four years, you've been a member of our city council. And last year, you've been the leader of this council. And you've done a terrific job leading the city council, and the others have given accolades for the service that you have done, and I don't need to go over those again. But I do want to, on behalf of the entire city council, present you with this plaque, and thank you sincerely, not only for your service this year as mayor, but for all the service you've given this city over the years.
Well, if you think I'm going to take back all those nasty things I said about you...
And I thought you were kidding.
Well, after four years of being on the council, strangely enough, I was, just a few weeks ago, was asked to speak before the mayor's youth council and tell them what a city council person does. I had to think about that. And what I came up with is, we really only do three things up here. We hire three people, we give them the responsibility to build a city family, we give them the responsibility to serve as a resource and staff to the council, and we ask them to execute council policy. And then we govern. We govern based upon policy. These two past councils have established over 17 strategic plans, such as the Financial Strategic Plan, the Facility Financing Plan, the Bike Master Plan, the Arts and Cultural Master Plan, the Harbor Area Management Plan, numerous revitalization community plans. And all of those plans are a zero-sum game, one overall fixed budget in which everything must fit, living within our means, and yet executing those in a very delicate way. We suggest and support community programs and activities based upon community desire, but probably most importantly, we solve community problems. And all of the above is done without regard to personal benefit or partisan politics. And it's in the best interest of 87,000 residents that we represent, not of individual friends or special interest groups. This is what we do. And it's been a privilege to serve with this council, Leslie, Mike, Keith, even you, Ed, Tony, Nancy. Sharing our individual expertise and our constituents' desires has been an honor to serve as your mayor. I now fully understand why it's so important for everyone to take a spouse. There are simply some things you can't blame on the mayor. As a family policymakers, advisors, and implementers, we have accomplished much, all aimed at providing meaningful and efficient municipal services, operating within a balanced budget, growing reserves, and enhancing our overall quality of life. We have worked with our nine labor groups, who are a critical part of our city family and part of our long-term solution of sustainable governance. We have maintained our aging infrastructure and made efficient delivery of municipal services. We have paid attention to our roads and our landscaping. We have added generational serving facilities like Oasis, the Newport Coast Community Center, the Civic Center, two new parks, and two new parks to be accessed next year, all dedicated to enhancing our community program and quality of life. And equally important, all of this has been done within the city's operating budget, including a well-thought-out, citizen-recommended financing plan without requiring any increase in tax rates. And we have given back. As you've heard this evening, my initiative, the Newport Dividend, omitted city building fees for residential remodeling, saving property owners, as of this morning, $1.8 million in fees, and generating over $88 million worth of new construction. That has meant new jobs in building, retail sales, real estate and lending industries, and more. In turn, it will mean more revenue to the city within the existing tax rates through increased property values, retail sales, and more. An economic value for the city, something that I desired and began to develop when I created the city's Economic Development Committee in 1993, under then-Mayor Clarence Turner. I'm very proud of our city's financial condition. It is because of council policy, and our finance department's superior fiscal management, and the three bond-rating agencies that evaluate fiscal management nationwide, have all given Newport Beach their highest ratings for financial stewardship and management. Newport Beach is one of only five cities in the state of California with this distinction. Now, while not all decisions made by the council have been easy or unanimous, we have worked together through our discussions as a family with respect for one another. This respect has spilled over and into and throughout the staff, from the position of city manager, to the highly qualified and respected police officers on our local patrols in the community, and park maintenance workers who serve service benefits each of us every day. It is the city family that I will miss most as I leave the council. My fellow council members and a dedicated and loyal staff from top down that collectively delivers what we may each define slightly differently, but consistently, as our quality of life. I give a special thanks to my family. My wife, my children, Rusty and his wife, Dr. Allison Hill, as we fondly say, she's a pediatric cardiologist, she's our first doctor and our first Democrat. Brad and Meredith, Lindsay and John, and five incredible grandkids. Thanking them for allowing me the time from family. Dedicate 20, to often 40, hours a week in this civic job. And my personal staff, Whit Peterson, and Alan Lemon, his predecessor, and my business partner, Larry Frappwell, who have all assisted me in serving on four different educational boards and running a business while also serving on this council. I also give special thanks to my mentors on the council, both former Mayor Steve Rosansky and former Mayor Ed Selig, for bringing me along. And I give thanks to the hundreds of citizens who were never bashful in sharing their thoughts on every topic that we discussed. I think together, we have made a difference in a positive direction for the benefit of our 87,000 residents. My public service began with involvement in university committees and serving as student body president at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo in the '60s. This led to becoming, being recruited as a member of Governor Ronald Reagan's policymaking team for his second term as governor in the '70s, which was followed by community involvement beginning in the '90s in Newport Beach, and now ending as mayor of one of the greatest cities in the nation 50 years later. God, I'm getting old. Thank you to the public that has allowed me to serve my half a century. We leave the city in great financial shape with a high quality of life and a very motivated, high-quality city staff. New leadership is ready to take over. The decision will be theirs to either continue the momentum that exists through well-thought-out strategic plans, or risk disrupting the delicate balance of funding that produces a high quality of life, and losing a highly motivated and productive delivery team. The burden is now theirs to perform for the good of us all. May God bless you, my friends. May God bless our community, the wonderful city, and all of its people. Last call for Assemblyman Wagner.
That, Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The city provides yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
And before we begin public comments, I would like to welcome Assemblyman Don Wagner. Would you like to make any comments, or I've never known an assemblyman that...
Well, when you ask, I can't say no. And I would say I'd be brief, but as a lawyer and a politician with a microphone, you guys might want to make yourself comfortable. I just want to take a minute, this is a special evening. First of all, to say thank you to the city council. During your term in office, I was privileged also to serve Newport Beach. And so it is, I guess, my privilege and my honor to say thank you to all of you on behalf of our shared constituents. The work you folks have done has been enormous, and as a former local government... The work you folks have done has been enormous, and as a former local government official myself, I know how hard you work and how important the work that you all do is. And so, I do want to thank all of you for your service to the city of Newport Beach. And this is a great evening for democracy. We have an opportunity to welcome new council members. The public have had their opportunity to say what they want about the direction of the council, and it is my privilege to be here and to say welcome to the new council members as well. Your work is cut out for you. You have very large shoes to fill. You have a marvelous city that you now have an opportunity to govern. And as somebody who is privileged to serve in office with you, I want to say thank you to all of the council members, new and old, for your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And with that, I would like to open up for public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Dorothy Kraus. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Hill, council members, and newly-elected council members. Special thanks and appreciation to Mayor Hill and council members Hen, Gardner, and Daigle for your dedication, commitment, stewardship, and hard work these past years. You have accomplished quite a lot. And welcome and congratulations to the new council members. As some of you may know, I am the treasurer of the Political Action Committee that worked to defeat Ballot Measure Y. I look forward to working with the new council for the benefit of the community and in alignment with the vision set forth in the adopted general plan, and, when needed, seek common ground on tough issues. I wish you all the best of luck, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make comment on an item not on the agenda?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Mayor Hill, your speech is very difficult to follow, especially since, like Charles Granier, I have nothing brilliant or remarkable to say, but I did want to say a few words, both to the outgoing council members, to the council as an institution, and to the incoming members. Now, I'll try to be brief. To the outgoing members, I would just like to say thank you very much, all of you, for your service. To the council as a continuing governmental issue, since this institution, but with changing faces, since this is a public meeting, I just can't help but note the absence of the normal, dull business of a city on tonight's agenda. I understand the importance of ceremony, but I'm not quite sure why in the last couple of decades, the December meetings in Newport Beach have become exclusively ceremonial. It might be noted that for the first 80 or so years of this city's 108-year history, it was considered normal, proper, and nothing at all out of the ordinary for the city's governing body to hold two normal business meetings during December. And indeed, until two years ago, the city charter, which we have lived under for 60 years as of January 7th coming up, actually technically required that we do that. While the changing of the faces on the dais is certainly a very important thing to do, the last time this Newport Beach City Council as a continuing institution executed the normal city business was on November 25th, and the next scheduled meeting is not until January 13th. To the best of my knowledge, this will be the first-ever December, as well as the first interval of seven weeks in which no city business at all of the normal kind came before the city council for so long a period. Just an observation I think is important to make. To the incoming members, I would also like to say welcome, and there's many people here in the audience. I don't know if those incoming members wish to hear from their constituents, or if their constituents want to speak to them. During their term of service, they're certainly going to be learning about the Brown Act, and I would point out to them, it wisely prohibits any discussion by the council of an item that's not listed on the agenda, but nowhere in the Brown Act does it prohibit a council from inviting the public to speak to them. So if they wish to provide that opportunity, they're certainly welcome to do that, as long as they treat all speakers equally. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, Justin Cox. Wanted to thank the council for, especially the outgoing members, for all their efforts to make this city a better place. We have a big audience today, and it's nice to know that people come and attend and speak out at city council. It makes a big difference when the community gets involved and we try to make the city a better place. Wanted to especially thank Leslie for all her efforts at the Upper Newport Bay. There's been a lot of improvement, especially now that we've finally got some rain, things are coming back, a lot of new wildlife, and it's a special place within the city. And as I think Leslie so eloquently mentioned, the water is all a big part of what the city of Newport Beach is, and we're being good stewards. Wanted to thank especially Keith, who's been at the OC Parks Commission and also the city for a lot of the efforts here. Sounds like Michael Hen has done some great work on the finance, and Rush has been a great leader in accomplishing a lot of projects. I know there's always controversy with this or that, but at the end of the day, we've gotten a lot done, and it's been great. And Ed, thank you for all your support, and Tony and Nancy, nice to see you all chairing all the different subcommittees and different things. Takes a lot of time, and people don't realize how much work goes in, you know, in closing. It's amazing, there's all the volunteers at the city of Newport, or the volunteer at the bay, and all the hours that go into those kind of projects. It takes time and a lot of dedication and devotion, so it's one thing that we all should keep in mind, and I want to thank everyone for all their hard work.
Thank you, Justin. Anyone else like to make public comment?
Good evening, council. I'd like to thank the outgoing members of council, as well as the continuing ones...
If you could give us your name initially.
Denise Oberman, yeah, resident of Newport. Thank you, Mayor Hill. I'd like to welcome the new council members. I'd like to say, on behalf of myself and a number of other members of the community, we look forward to some new strategic direction. We look forward to having some new energy around the alignment between the decisions and the action of our representatives and the staff who serve them with the people. We do think, and I personally think, that Newport is a fantastic place to live. I think that there are some things that are in jeopardy. We have some beautiful open areas, our water, our DNA, our bluffs. Now we have all the manufactured parks that we could possibly need for the next 200 years, so maybe we can create a little new balance and regenerate our interest in preserving our open space, beautiful views. And I guess lastly, you know, have an open mind to change, so having a new council that has the benefit of not having had a long history, maybe can work together with the staff to look at open-mindedness and not simply say, "We've always done something a certain way, or this way, for 30 years," because maybe there's a better way. And I have confidence that the city can continue to be a great place under the new leadership team, and expect a lot of controversy and heated process, and that's all healthy stuff to the better good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, then I'm going to bring it back. I believe, Madam Clerk, this is when I adjourn the meeting? No.
Next item is the certification of the general municipal election. The general election was conducted on November 4th, and the Orange County Registrar of Voters' Office has certified the returns of the election and pursuant to elections code. The governing body shall adopt a resolution reciting the fact of the election and other matters that are enumerated. And the staff report has been provided to you.
Thank you. I would accept a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
All right. And before we vote, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this topic?
Mayor Hill, members of the council, as the outgoing council's last piece of dull business...
Your name, please.
My name is Jim Mosher, and I wish to call the council's attention to Exhibit 2 in the resolution that you are about to certify. This may, in my usual tedious way, I do feel that this is an important issue, and I wanted to bring it to the attention of both the old and the new city councils. First is really a trivial comment, that Page 2 of this is the grand totals for Newport Beach votes. This is the fourth page of Exhibit 2. It's copy of Page 1725 from the registrar's report. First of all, it has a column very confusingly labeled "Party Member Registration." I believe that is a misprint. It is voter registration, because it includes people who are not, like myself, members of any designated party. More important thing I wanted to call your attention to, this is the page giving the grand totals for Dianne Dixon. It's the same on all the other pages, and it divides the votes by voting district. There's a total shown here for Newport Beach as a whole, shows, for instance, 28,373 votes cast. Then under that, it gives the seven council districts and the number of votes cast in each of those. Problem is that if you add up how many votes were cast in the seven council districts, the total you get is about 2,000 votes, less than the amount that is reported for the city of Newport Beach as a whole. Clearly a problem with the numbers that are being reported to us in the individual council districts. One might wonder if we have 2,000 voters, phantom voters, who don't live in any district that are somehow voting in Newport Beach. I understand that's not the problem. The reason for the discrepancy, as I understand from the registrar, is that because the reason for our districts in Newport Beach is simply a residency requirement for qualification to run for the city council, they do not regard in vote counting any significance to them. So when they consolidate votes by precincts, some of them, they don't know which district to put them in. And therefore, in these, which look to be the certified results, they arbitrarily leave those out. So the bottom line I'm trying to present to you is, for many years, we've been getting things that we thought were the totals for the districts. They're not the correct totals. If it is important for us, as a city, to get the correct totals, we should try to encourage the registrar to do the proper reporting for us. Unless we do that, we're not going to get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? If not, then I'll bring it back to the council for vote. Do we have our voting screen?
Should we declare the election void on the basis of those comments, Mr. Mayor?
I guess...
Continue the item another couple of blocks.
Yeah, there we go.
I think it's...
Pretty serious.
Certainly worthy of discussion in January. We're waiting for the voting screen?
No.
No voting screen?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Next, we have the administration of the oath of office for the council member elects. So I will be having each council member come up one by one, and their family members are also invited to come up with them. And then Judge James, Honorable Judge James E. Rogan, Judge of the Superior Court of the State of California, will administer the oath of office prescribed by the state constitution, and then I will deliver the certificate of election to each council member.
Madam Clerk, I'm sorry to interrupt. I want to do some housekeeping items. Just to make sure family members and friends have a place to sit, I was asking maybe if the city staff could respectfully move to the community room, because no one else wants to sit there. So the city staff is usually in this part of the building, and there's usually no one else here, so this might free up some seats for folks. So thank you, colleagues, I appreciate that. Anyone can watch it live in the other room there. And then, secondly, I think Mr. Piattar had wanted Pastor McKenzie to do an additional prayer before the swearing-in. Is that correct, Scott? Okay, so without causing too much trouble, that might be appropriate to do right now. That sound about right? So Pastor McKenzie, once again.
Well, I put some thoughts together to encourage the incoming council members, as well as the continuing council members, and hopefully to honor the outgoing council members as well. And it's in regard to leadership. I just want to make a few remarks, and then I'll pray, a prayer of dedication for these that are being sworn in tonight. I've done a lot of observation over the years of leadership, and I've had the opportunity to observe leadership at many different levels. I've seen leadership in government at many different levels, in the home, in the family, in the church, and in other places. And I've observed, in my observations, I've come to the conclusion that there are some qualities and principles that are present in leadership that give leadership its finest So I'd like to just share some of those very quickly. Under the heading of "When Leadership Finds Its Finest Hours," it's when leaders keep in mind that they're servants, for they serve in a country whose history is to have government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Leadership finds its finest hour when leaders are humble, thinking of others is more important than themselves, for the opposite is to be prideful, but grace is given to the humble, and true honor is always preceded by humility. Leadership finds its finest hour when leaders are courageous, to stand for what is right, even when no one is standing with them, and to reject what is wrong, even if everyone is for it. Leadership finds its finest hour when leaders sacrifice for the good of others, for true leadership, as has already been pointed out here tonight, is accompanied by personal sacrifice and suffering. Leadership finds its finest hour when leaders are examples of what they profess to believe, for those who elect them will never fear following them, when they see them following an honorable code of conduct that's personal and consistent in their lives. Leadership finds its finest hour when leaders are peacemakers, for peace and unity is what the human heart longs for, and its pursuit will influence leaders' behavior and decisions. And though they may not always achieve it, its pursuit catches the attention of God, who is a prince of peace, and he finds no greater joy than in seeing his people living in peace and harmony with him and with each other. Leadership finds its finest hour when leaders have a spiritual dimension in faith that can show them their way, a way that overcomes when they would go under, a way that helps them stand in the face of danger, a way that strengthens them to bear up under suffering, a way that steadies them when everything around them is shaking. Leaders who are elected in our day have been chosen by the people to govern and lead them in difficult times, times marked by crisis, stress, fear, and uncertainty. Therefore, we ask this evening, as we bring a prayer of dedication, for wisdom that is wiser than our own, for strength that is stronger than our own, for power that is secure and has no need to control, and for character that's respected and above reproach, and of course, vision, a vision that never fades as to what this city can be when its leaders pull together with a greater good in mind. Leadership that shares the strong conviction that they're not just elected by the people, but have been chosen by and are accountable to a sovereign God who raises one up and puts down another. So with these thoughts in mind, would you join me in a prayer of dedication? Lord, this evening, we're asking for your blessing on these council members, and the good work that has been done, and the good work that lays ahead. Our requests are brought humbly before you, and we ask... Our requests are brought humbly before you, and we ask that the principles of leadership that we've heard here tonight and many others will be representative of these council members as they've served this community. So I ask, Lord, that you will bless this fair city, these good people, and especially this dedicated council of chosen servant leaders. In Jesus' name I pray.
So if we can have the Honorable Judge Rogan come forward, please. And then we will first have District 1, Councilmember-elect Dianne Dixon forward, and her family, if they would like to join her.
Sure. Welcome to stand over by the flag. Actually, you'll, we won't catch you on the microphone, but I think folks will know what's going on there. And family members are welcome to join the candidate as well.
Next, if we can have District 3, Councilmember-elect Marshall Duffy-Duffield and his family.
Madam Clerk, I now turn the gavel over to you for the election of the mayor.
This is the time for the election of the mayor. All members of the city council are on an equal basis to nominate and elect. The same procedure is also followed for the selection of the mayor pro tem. To clarify, nominations do not require a second, they are not debatable, cannot be amended or reconsidered, and a majority vote is required to elect. The motion to close nominations does require a second, it is not debatable, or can be reconsidered, and requires a two-thirds vote. If there is more than one nomination, the voting will be done by paper ballot and the results read at the conclusion of the balloting. If there is only one nomination, the voting will be done by an oral vote. Nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations?
Excuse me? Yes. I move to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Selich as mayor.
Are there any other nominations? We need a second to close the nominations? With the motion of Councilmember Curry and seconded by Councilmember Muldoon, we will do the oral votes, all in favor, to close the nominations?
Aye.
All opposed? There's none, so that's unanimous. So at this point, we will have public comments, and then after that, we will have the actual voting for the mayor. So at this time, are there any public comments from the audience? Seeing no one coming forward, oh, there's other switching seats. All in favor for Councilmember Selich to become our next mayor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Councilmember Selich. You are the new mayor.
Okay, the council will now consider the election of the mayor pro tem. Are there any nominations for mayor pro tem?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to nominate Councilwoman Dianne Dixon to mayor pro tem.
Is there a second? One second. Okay.
Move to close the nominations.
Okay. Nominations are closed. Do we need to take a vote on that?
You need a vote to close the nominations.
Okay. Having trouble pulling the script here.
There is a motion, we will need a second to close nominations.
Okay. Well, Councilman Piattar moved. Is there a second to that?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. The nominations are closed, and we have to vote, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now the, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that likes to provide public comment on this? Okay. Seeing none, we'll now take a vote on the mayor pro tem election.
It's an oral vote, mayor, so just all in favor?
So do we need a new motion on that, or not?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of the mayor pro tem signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations, Councilmember Dixon. You are now the new mayor pro tem for 2014, 2015. Okay, now's the time that we do our little dance up here, is we select our seats. So we go by seniority, so Councilmember Curry.
I'm happy where I'm at.
Councilmember Petros.
I'm afraid I'd get lost if I moved my seat.
Okay. This is easier than I thought. Councilmember Duffield.
Happy here.
Okay. Councilmember Muldoon?
Happier.
I assume you're happy.
Do I have a choice?
Okay. So now we will go to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think we should recognize the presence in the audience of some distinguished elected officials. First of all, our new Assemblymember, Matt Harper, welcome to Newport Beach. Second, I would like to recognize the new mayor of the city of Costa Mesa, Steve Menzinger, I understand is here tonight. And coming just off the council, former councilmember Wendy Lee, a good friend, is here in Costa Mesa. I believe I see newly-elected to the Mission Viejo City Council Colonel Greg Rast in the back. Is that correct?
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Curry. So now we'll go to remarks by our new incoming council members, and Mayor Pro Tem Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor Selich. Appreciate that. Good evening. Good evening, all, and thank you all for being... Oh, I'm learning the technical aspects. Can you hear me? Good evening, and thank you all for being here, particularly to our residents, all of you who voted for change, transparency, fiscal restraint, civility in our city government. You spoke, the city listened. I am honored and humbled to represent you and our great city. I am looking forward to working with our residents, our city staff, and my fellow council members for the betterment of Newport Beach and its citizens. I thank Mayor Hill, Nancy Gardner, Leslie Daigle, and Mike Han for their dedicated service to our community, a combined service of over 35 years. I am grateful to the many friends from District 1 and beyond across the city, whose early encouragement and support for my campaign made a difference. Their passion for protecting our quality of life in Newport Beach, especially the safety and security of our neighborhoods, continues to inform my agenda for action. I want to thank Denise Oberman, Linda Klein, Pete Palet, Evelyn Hart, Jim Miller, Dr. Michael Bransiewski, and the Honorable Marion Burtson. You were there for me all along the way, and I am grateful. Thank you to my new council colleagues, Councilman Duffy, Councilman Muldoon, Councilman Piattar. It's going to be a great next four years. Thank you also to my husband, Pat, and my dear sister Wendy, for their love and encouragement all along the way, and as well as the hundreds of new friends that I have made as I've campaigned and walked every neighborhood in our beautiful city. I've talked with thousands of residents who share a common goal. They want Newport to be the best and to provide the best in services and in safety. We will enjoy many debates and collaborative problem-solving discussions on how to deliver the best for the lowest possible cost. These are important opportunities for all of your voices to be heard. My pledge, I will act in the best interests of our city after hearing all sides of an issue, and I need your help, and I need you all to stay involved. I am here for you, the residents and business owners who spoke loud and clear. This is your council, and I'm here to serve you. It is my privilege and my greatest honor.
Councilmember Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor Selich. I, of course, want to start out with thanking my beautiful wife, Terri, for putting up with all of this, and... all of this, and we both venturing into this, we had no idea that the complexity of it. So thank you for that, and also my little hiccup along the road that I had, and of course, my daughter Kelly and her husband Chase, and Bree, our new addition to our family, and my son Tyler. So, this is a lot different than the other chambers that I was at 10 years ago, and it's quite serious in here. The city is quite daunting, it is, I've taken tours of all the fire departments and so on and so forth, and parks, and I had no idea the complexity of the city. So is there any way I can get out of this at this point? I'm not sure. But I do thank my former council people, they did one heck of a job, because I look at everything in the city, and it's a darn good city, and it's hard to find fault anywhere. Having said that, I would like to just get right in, because this has been a long, long evening, I had no idea how my grandson made it till this 8 o'clock, but he did. Gary Hill for making all the telephone calls, this fellow from, this Bruin guy from UCLA, somewhere up there, John, played some basketball, I don't know his name, Vallally or something. Billy Dutton, Pete Palet, John Kirchi, Shannon and Byron Tarnitzer, Marilyn and Rusty Turner, of course, Susan Riddle, and this other fellow on Balboa Island, geez, starts with a Bob, he's very convicted. Oh, there he is, right there, Mr. McCaffrey. Dave Ellis, Jack Wu of all people, started a year ago on me, and I had no intention of listening to him, but he was quite persuading. And Susan and Mark Hilgrin. Of course, Diane, Scott, and Kevin helped me along the way through the campaign, encouraging me, telling me to be Duffy, and I was so nervous, it was, the campaign was very hard for me, it's not what I do, but I thank you for your votes, and I'll try to do my best, I will do my best, and I look forward to the coming four years. Thank you.
I apologize for addressing you as Councilmember Duffy, that's what I'm so used to calling you, that it's going to be hard getting to address you in more formally as Councilmember Duffield. Councilmember Muldoon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank some very important people to me, my parents and family who are watching from out of state, Heather Hewlett, Dave and Christie Ellis, Bob McCaffrey, Tom Larkin, John and Christie Clary, Laura Dietz, Denise Oberman, Jim Miller, Steve Barick, Larry Smith, Lee Lowry, and my new colleagues Diane, Duffy, and Scott. It's an honor to have been elected to serve for Newport Beach City Council. I look forward to serving the people over the next four years, and I hope to protect private property rights, strengthen public safety, and reduce local taxes and fees. This council won't convene until after the holidays, so I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope that we're able to work together in a collaborative way to put the city first. Thank you.
Councilmember Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's always fun to get up here for the first time and enjoy the Taj Mahal and all those bunnies outside just thinking of watching us here. I want to start out thanking, you know, God and country, and God's wisdom, God's strength, and I'm truly humbled by our country and the opportunities that we have, and I hope that I can live up to that kind of a servant leader. I want to thank my wife and family for their support, without which I wouldn't have the freedom to be here. I have a lot of supporters, as you have heard mentioned by my colleagues, and without their tireless support, again, you know, it was a team effort, there are a lot of people here that put in a lot of hours and a lot of personal commitment, many of you are here tonight, and I thank you for your support. I thank the voters for their trust in all of us here to be able to step forth and fill in and choose that are big to fill. We've got some areas that we need to tweak and turn around, but the city, like everybody has said, is in really good shape, and I'm very proud to be part of this city and be part of the leadership of the city. And I want to thank the voters for their continued support and help as we go forward and make progress towards making the city even better. And thank you all for coming tonight and joining the show. Thank you.
Thank you, incoming council members. I'd like to thank my fellow council members for selecting me to lead the Newport Beach City Council in 2015. I appreciate the confidence they have shown, and I pledge to lead this council in openness, openness, respect, and equanimity. We've just gone through a contentious campaign season, the debate was spirited and lively with different points of view expressed. However, the voters have spoken, and it's now time to get down to the business of governing our city. Although there may be different points of views on some issues, I believe that all of us up here have the best interest of our city and its residents at heart. I believe we will do, as Newport Beach City Council's past have always done, and that has come together to make our city even better. New ideas will be presented, some will be accepted, some rejected, old ideas will be reviewed, some retained, others discarded. As a result, the new will merge with the old, and we will have a better city. I welcome the new members to our city council and look forward to working with them to improve our city. I must however also recognize the contributions of our outgoing council members. They are the core of what I described, as many of you may remember, in 2006 as the Dream Team. I have to say that they have been the very best to work with. I appreciate the honesty, integrity, hard work, and willingness to take on the tough issues demonstrated by them over the past eight years. So now the remains of the Dream Team will now merge with Team Newport. And with the merger, a new day has arrived, and with it comes change. Change is something that a lot of folks meet with fear. Personally, I embrace change, as it offers the opportunity for reinvigoration and new ideas. New does not mean the old is completely thrown out, it just allows it to be reviewed and improved upon. 2015 will be an exciting year, it will be an opportunity to finish up some major projects and initiative, an opportunity to review others, and the opportunity to initiate new ideas that we collectively believe are of value. Above all, it will be an opportunity for us to come together, as we always do, as city council members and residents, to do our best to make our city an even greater place than it is today. Finally, I'd like to thank my lovely wife Lynn, who's sitting in the audience there. Lynn, stand up, please. I'd like to thank her for her love and support, being the wife of a council member does have its challenges at times. Unfortunately, my daughters and their families could not be here tonight, but they are always there supporting their dad and his endeavors, and I appreciate that. So I look forward to the challenges of the year ahead, and I predict great success for this city council. And yeah, I see some group hugs in our future. So 2015 will be an exciting year, and I look forward to the challenges ahead. Thank you. So now we will go to city council announcements, or matters which council members would like to be placed on a future agenda, these are non-discussion items, and I'll start with Councilman Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request, coming back on the 13th agenda, a substitution for the Finance Committee, that we could replace the Finance Committee with a Finance Commission, one that might be seven members, one each appointed by each of the existing city council, that would serve at the pleasure of that councilperson, and I'd love to have staff examine some of our adjacent cities who have similar type systems and the pros and cons of those systems. I'd also like to bring back fire rings, as far as burning wood in the fire rings. So, coming up with a scheme that'll keep the Coastal Commission happy and the AQMD happy at the same time, which will be interesting, spacing, and get a coastal development permit approved that we can keep those permanently. And then, City Attorney has also already done some work on this, when we asked for the invocation, there's a 2004 city council policy on what can and can't be said in a prayer and an invocation, which has since been outdated by current case law, and the City Attorney has actually proposed a new resolution, I'd like to entertain that, too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Petros?
I have no announcements tonight, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items to agendize for the January 13, 2015 meeting. One, propose a resolution to recognize State Senator Mimi Walters for her outstanding years of service representing the people of the 37th Senate District, and to congratulate Congresswoman-elect Walters on her election to the U.S. House of Representatives. And number two, an item to request staff to conduct a project completion closeout audit on the Civic Center construction project, so that we may identify lessons learned and put this matter to rest to the satisfaction of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Muldoon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would request that staff to present to council options to repeal and replace the dock tax and mooring fees, including the seizing of property without just compensation and restrictions on the transfer of ownership. Additionally, I would request staff to bring back a proposed scope of an audit for the Tylands Fund to be sent to RFP. Please include the source of funds and expenditures of funds by area, such as Beach versus Harbor, for the past 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duffield?
Yes, I would like to propose a Tylands audit, not, of all the income and expenses, it's just not a witch hunt, it's just to inform me, all of us, better to discuss the various sources of revenue that comes in to the harbor, and expenses against the Surf Beach, i.e. everything else on the Tylands, it's a very complex item of the city that I've never been able to get my arms around, so I would propose that we do that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Curry?
No items to agendize, but I would just note that on Saturday, along with Mayor Hill, we were there, along with many of the members of the city council, to dedicate Sunset Ridge Park, a fabulous facility in Councilmember Petros's district, that's now expanding our services to West Newport, something that could not have been done were not for the very effective facilities financing plan adopted by the city council and the leadership of all of the council, particularly Councilmember Petros, in moving forward, and it's a great park, for those of you who haven't been there, I encourage you to go and visit.
Thank you. I just have one announcement, the City Clerk's office will be accepting new and unwrapped toys for children of our troops, new or used DVDs for the troops, and gift cards and cash donations for the families through Operation Christmas. Operation Christmas is a program organized by Yellow Ribbon America that supports more than 300,000 members of the armed services and their families. If you'd like to participate, please drop off your donations to the City Clerk's office or Oasis Senior Center by noon on December 23. Madam Clerk?
Now's the time for motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, I would like to adjourn our meeting this evening in memory of Barbara Brinkerhoff. Barbara was an icon in my industry. Barbara, who was the wife of Dawn Brinkerhoff, lived on Balboa Island for 45 years. She and Dawn co-founded Landscapes International, a world-renowned landscape architectural firm, together in 1958, and moved their offices to Orange County in 1970. I first met Barbara early in my career, and I made the mistake of thinking she was part of the office clerical staff. I soon found out, however, that she was a talented designer in her own right, and a full partner in the firm. Although her work is all over Southern California, some of the Newport Beach projects she designed include Belcourt, and those of you that remember when that project was first developed, coming up from Bison on MacArthur Boulevard, that it was just an amazing display of plant materials and color. She also designed the Newport North Villas, the terraces in Corona del Mar, and many personal residences in our town. She also designed 12 casinos on the Las Vegas Strip. The amazing landscaping treatments you see when you visit these grand casinos are the result of her talent. Her passion was for the color that she included in many of her projects. Dawn and Barbara frequented one of my favorite haunts, the Galley Restaurant, where I would see them quite often, their love and devotion to each other was always quite evident. Barbara survived by Julie Brinkerhoff Jacobs, now president of her mother and father's firm, Martin Brinkerhoff, president and CEO of MB Productions, Kristi Dunbar, a successful ICU nurse at Western Medical Center, and Karen Hedstrom, a leader at St. Andrews Presbyterian Church, PTA president at Woodbridge High School, and as has been noted to me, great cook and a homemaker, too. All their spouses, 12 grandchildren, 17 great-grandchildren, and of course, her adoring husband, Dawn. She was born in Los Angeles, January 7, 1930, and passed away on December 1, 2014. Her services were held at St. Andrews Presbyterian Church here in Newport Beach, followed by a celebration of her life at the Pacific Club. She was adored and remembered with great reverence. And with that, we're adjourned.